Good afternoon. I'll call together a regular session of Town Council. This is July 3rd. And tomorrow's the 4th. I hope everyone has a wonderful 4th. It's wonderfully warm, no fireworks unfortunately, but we're doing the right thing. We're not having fireworks. So, having called the meeting to order, Rhonda Rowcall.
Butler?
Here.
Circus?
Here.
Madison?
Here.
Shank? Here.
Good.
Yep.
We do not have any proclamations or presentations this evening. Do I have anyone within the public who would like to come forward and make a public comment? Okay. If we did receive a letter late this afternoon, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
And I will put that into the public record and acknowledge that we did receive it. Unfortunately, I didn't get through the entire letter yet, so it is there and I will read it a little bit later. Consent agenda, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion at all?
Oh, just on the draft agendas, it looked like there was some things on that list that maybe were outdated, or I don't know.
We need to go through the list. I was going to suggest we do that at our next meeting.
Yeah. I won't be here about it if I have any ideas.
Oh, you're on draft agendas, or you're, um, okay, no, I have comment on minutes.
Well, let's go to your comments on minutes.
Okay. On the...
Can we refer to the pages?
Yeah, I will. On the minutes from 11:07.
I'm glad everybody remembers.
Yeah, of course.
To last year. I don't even remember.
Where'd it go?
Okay, where'd it go? Okay, Bob.
There it is. I think it's, this is a typo. This is page four of seven or 10 of 78. Line 139. I believe that should be mature in 2026.
You're correct.
Okay, and then there is one more. On the minutes of December 12th. Line 7 says Mayor Bueno, I think it ought to, it's supposed to say Mayor Butler.
Oh, we brought him back in. I didn't catch that.
And that is all.
Okay, with those minor corrections, I think we're fine with minutes. Is there anything else? And with the draft agendas, Clint, let's look at that whole list this next time, the work session or what have you. Okay, we have a motion and a second with some minor corrections to minutes. All in support, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Let me get back to, next item. Is a public hearing. This is ordinance number 10, series of 2017. And what this is, for those who are watching or listening, is an ordinance acting on a applicant's requested minor amendment of a final plat and development on 30 percent slopes relative to the proposed relocation of the building envelope on Lot 1 up in Ridge Run, Unit Number 4. So, I don't know who's going to come up. Hey, come on up.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I feel I have to recuse myself from this part of today's discussion. I am an adjacent neighbor to this plot. The architect, Scott Boynton, has met with me a number of times. We've gone over their, the proposal. And there is an email in the packet, page 39 of the packet, that expresses my single concern and request for screening from the home, or a portion of the home, if the change to the building envelope is approved. So with that, I guess I'll see you all later.
Okay. Anyone else?
I think so.
It's way down the hill from me. I know where it is. And Corey, you live over in this hood too, so. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. And who's going to speak, and who are you? We all know who you are, but. Let's go ahead for the record.
My name's Tom Newland of Newland Project Resources, and I'm here representing the applicant, John Nolan, John and Joe Nolan. Scott Broton is also here. He's the architect. Behind me, John Nolan is off to the right. We have Paul Tadune. Steve Pollak from HP Kumar, right? Yeah, and Corey Ferguson. So, we brought Steve along at the request of staff, just in case you had any questions regarding the steep slopes and geologic concerns.
Tom, can you pull your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's better. So, I have a presentation for you. I'd like to give, it's about five minutes or so that we could go.
Let's do that, because the public is not familiar with the project and was proposed.
Thank you. So, where is it? Well, actually, this property is located right here along Ridge Road, adjacent to the ski slopes, and also here's the village down here. So that gives you an idea of where it is. It's kind of a second switchback on the way up, third switchback, I guess. Here's the existing conditions on the property. Ridge Road coming around this way. There's a etched in kind of primitive road, if you will, that goes down to the ski slopes here. The existing building envelope is located to the east side of the property, up against Ridge Road. And our proposed building envelope is over here to the west. I'll get in a little more detail to this in a second. I just wanted to show you the existing conditions. So, what we're asking for is an amendment that is specific to Lot 1. This is not for the entire subdivision. We want to relocate the building lower and on the westerly portion of the lot. We also are asking for you to allow us to develop on slopes of 30 percent or greater. And why do we want to do this? A number of reasons. First, we feel it enhances the subdivision and improves the character of the neighborhood. It also reduces proximity and development to the neighboring parcels. It reduces impacts to the natural areas on the lot, provides less disturbance on slopes over 30 percent, and has no substantial impacts to the neighbors. We don't feel there's any substantial impacts. So, back to the building envelopes. This is a slope analysis for each one of the envelopes. And we've included the driveways as well, because you've got to get access to these envelopes. And we feel the driveway, particularly for the existing building envelope, is quite impacted for a number of reasons. You can see the less than 30 percent slopes are kind of in a ridge at the middle of the existing building envelope, and then it's steeper on either side. There's the existing building envelope. For the proposed building envelope, you'll notice that the driveway that's shown here does cross some steep slopes, but not in a serpentine fashion, and it really reduces a lot of impacts. And then here's the proposed building envelope on the west side of the slope, west side of the lot, I'm sorry. This is a comparison of the two building envelopes with regard to the steep slopes. I want to highlight a couple of numbers here. One is the proposed building envelope is about 500 square feet smaller than the existing building envelope. And then when you account for the two driveways for each one of the building envelopes, the proposed building envelope actually has about 2,000 square feet less impact to 30 percent slopes. So we don't feel there's any substantial impact to adjacent neighbors. In fact, it might even be, we even feel it might even be an enhancement. And this is why. It helps reduce visual impacts of the retaining wall and light pollution and tree removal that existing neighbors will go by every day to their houses. It softens the visual impacts on the lots to the south, and that's lots 2 through 4 down here, by lowering the building profile at least 20 feet on the site. Actually, the building envelope and the building itself would be about 20 feet lower than on the existing building envelope. And then it also allows for effective, more effective screening of adjacent lots, just because of the position. The building envelope's lower, it's easier to screen. Scott, I'd like to turn it over to you for a couple of slides to talk about.
Could I go back to that driveway? I want to try to get my arms around that. The initial driveway, if I understood what you said, it would have had to serpentine up? And that would have been a 30 percent slope, which would...
This, in order to reach the building envelope, we'd have to climb from the corner Ridge Road there. And so to make that elevation at a 10 percent grade on the driveway would require over 400 feet of driveway to get to the, basically the center of the envelope, whereas comparatively, go ahead and flip to the next one. To do the same thing here, to get to the center of that envelope, we'd be able to reduce that driveway, still maintain a 10 percent grade, but reduce it to around 200 square feet.
So, snow melt will be required?
Anything over 8 percent.
Yeah, right. Because I was going to say that there's a lot of snow melt on that. CO2 emissions, okay. Okay.
This is a, this is a diagram, just specific to Lot 1, that really compares a similar house on the existing envelope to the same house on a proposed envelope. And it's just showing that from floor level to floor level, there is 23 to 25 foot drop on the same envelope with both, both conditions respecting the 28 foot high limit as well.
It's kind of hard to see, I apologize, but these are photographic renderings that you had in your packet that show both the existing and proposed envelopes with the associated driveways. And you can really see how this serpentine driveway winding up here. In fact, the retaining walls here are about 12 feet tall, right Scott?
Correct.
Will really impact not only visually, but the hillside as well. And then, in comparison, the proposed building envelope is pushed back away from the road and the driveway itself. Although it does climb at about 8 to 10 percent, is not nearly as impactful to the slopes or the visual nature of Ridge Road. So, we believe it enhances the original subdivision for a number of reasons, and it reduces that visual impact from Ridge Road greatly. It also does that by eliminating the switchbacks and the retaining walls that directly about that road. It also does it by shifting the bulk and the mass of the development away from the road. It also reduced light and glare from interrupting the night sky as you drive up and down the road. And it cuts the length of the driveway in half, as Scott just mentioned, from 400 to about 200 feet. And also reduces the amount of vegetation removed, and I'll get to that in just a minute. We think it improves the character of the neighborhood by reducing the visual and environmental impacts. It also, the forested hillside remains visible from the road, and the development is, remains low density. We're not asking for any more floor area or anything like that. The natural forest growth is retained on the east side. And let me give you an idea of this vegetation. Basically, the bottom line is the building envelope and the driveway are smaller, so less vegetation is removed. But also, almost half the number of mature trees are removed for the proposed envelope as opposed to the existing envelope. And all of the mature trees that are seen from Ridge Road will remain in place. So here's the existing building envelope once again, and we've highlighted the mature trees with the green dots. And I forgot exactly how many there are, but there's a lot of them that have to come down, and you can see all of them from Ridge Road. That's in contrast to the mature trees that have to come down for the proposed building envelope. You can see it's much less, and it's also really not visual from Ridge Road. So, less impacts to steep slopes and utilities as well. Once again, the building envelope is smaller, the driveway shorter, we got less retainage and cut and fill to do. The driveway has less encroachment over the sewer line as well. There's an existing sewer line here that I want to point out to you. And you can kind of see it going right down the lot here, bisecting it, and then carrying out to Ridge Road. With the existing building envelope, you can see there's a lot of need to go into that sewer line easement and do a pretty substantial cut and fill, especially for this first switchback. As opposed to the proposed building envelope, where we basically crossed that sewer line in a perpendicular fashion. And I think the sewer district kind of commented on that as well, Scott, didn't they?
They did, and they're on board, and as long as we meet their coverage requirements.
Tom, wasn't there also a water easement involved?
There is, Tom, but go ahead and flip back one. You can see to the north, the CW line.
Right.
That is the water line. So it cuts across and sort of jumps in and out of the property on that north side.
Okay.
And finally, I'd like to close with consistency with a comprehensive plan. We think the proposed building envelope pertains to open, natural, and rural character by preserving more of the landscape. That's one of the strategic objectives. Also, the scale and development of the pattern hasn't changed. The sensitive hillside is preserved to a greater extent. This proposed building envelope minimizes the negative environmental and visual impacts of the development. And also, we are maintaining a load of density development pattern. And that's what I've got.
Okay, questions?
I would just like to see, or something in writing from Water and Sand regards to the sewer easement, that's all.
We've got that.
There, I think provided in your packet is a water, is a letter, a memo, from Water and Sand's engineer.
Mr. Circus was talking about screening. What are we talking about relative to his view plane? Is it massive, is it...
What would you say, Scott?
Is, when you're saying massive?
Is it a massive, like the house is in your face, or?
Oh, no.
No, I think it isn't off of his back, his deck, to the side, or?
Let's go, uh...
Let's see if you can pull it up.
Go to the overall site plan. Go ahead, keep going. You got a pointer on you?
All the way back. This one?
Nope, keep going.
Sorry. That one?
No, it was the aerial shot. I'm sorry. Was it the aerial shot?
Only aerials, yeah. You see her, but you like the trees, right?
There you go, right there.
Okay.
You have a pointer on you? So, Mayor.
Nope, that is not on.
So, Mr. Circus's house is right here. This is where the proposed envelope is, and so what he was commenting on was maintain some screening.
Oh, okay.
Here from his view.
Is that reasonable?
Which we're able to do.
Okay.
Very easily on that.
Okay.
Person of the site.
There we go.
Okay, that would make sense.
How tall is the retaining wall for the driveway, the proposed driveway? You said it was 12 feet for the serpentine driveway?
For the, for the proposed, we would be mostly, probably about 6 feet on the lower end of it.
This works, no?
Okay.
Yeah.
Right along this edge right here would be about 6 feet. You know, whereas, whereas the, flip back one. Whereas as this driveway goes up, this retaining back here, which covers the sewer line, is going to be about 8 feet tall as it climbs to plus 12 feet here.
Right.
There was one letter. It's uphill of the proposed envelope. That did not sound too favorable. Can you tell us the nature of what those view planes might be? And to what extent have we been able to talk with the owners of that particular property? You want to show us where it is? It's on what, Lot 4?
Lot 3.
Lot 3, okay.
So we are right here, Mr. Dalby. And so where his, his location is, is he overlooks Lot 1, and he is looking directly over where the proposed envelope is.
Oh, okay.
His property goes down quite a ways, down into here.
I mean, that's a steep slope all through there.
It's fairly consistent and gradual. And so he would be looking over the top of a structure on the proposed envelope, which again is, you know, over 20 feet lower than if it was on the existing side.
So it's less visually impactful, is what you're saying, Scott?
Correct. You know, and, and with that lot there, we feel that we are not affecting any primary views of the valley, of Mount Dale, or even across Snowmass Village. And then additionally to the north face of his house, we feel is not greatly impacted. I'm all kind of, can I give you guys some images?
Yeah, just bring them up.
So this is, this is the north elevation of Lot 3.
If you're going to speak, you really need to have a microphone? Do you want me to get one to take with you, or?
No, that's my sitter.
So, whose house is this?
So this is the north elevation of Lot 3. So that's, that's the, the wall that would face Lot 1 in the proposed envelope. So we feel it's not significantly impacting any of the primary views.
Not a lot of view from that side.
There's no view. Questions from council members?
No, I'm okay.
I mean, it seemed like most of the people seemed to be in favor of it, or they just didn't want to get involved.
Okay. What I think we might want to do is on ordinance number 10, is make one of the conditions a screening, which I've heard you verbally say that's reasonable. Okay. So I'll take a motion from a fellow, no?
You want to have any public testimony?
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have opened this in a public hearing. Anybody from the public? I'll open the public hearing. Please come up. Come on up to the bike. Come on up to the bike. You get to be recorded. Yeah. I need your name, and you're in Lot 2, so we'll need to get familiar with Lot 2.
You can use the podium.
Right, the podium.
I'm the neighbor in Lot 2, which...
And? And I'm... Name is?
My name is Michelle Crawford.
Well, welcome.
I've looked at all these plans. We've talked, you know, over the phone and through internet to see what, what was happening, because we are very concerned. We are above the original, directly of original. And they don't see, you can't see the slope from this angle. It is a steep, steep angle.
Right.
And they have to build a house high enough, or cut into the slope enormously. And we're concerned that there's a lot of, there's been a lot of slippage in the, one on the end of our street, right next to, to our property. There was a slippage of considerable amount of stone. They had to fill it with great big boulders. We are also concerned about slippage if they do cut into the slope. It doesn't look like it. And I know the area very well, because we used to go skiing through there, that way. We have another way out, but anyway, we were, we are in favor of the new proposal in that it still will impact somewhat, but so much less. Because it is lower and it is further away, and it, we're concerned about the slope sliding down.
So, your house is close to Deer Ridge?
We're, we're sitting right next to, the Dalby's are here, we're here.
Okay, okay.
Those two houses are right next to one another.
Okay. Got it.
Anyway, we are for.
Okay, thank you so very much. It's great to meet you. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to go forward with ordinance number 10, series 2017.
Do you have to see the condition now?
With the condition?
With the condition.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Alyssa. Any further discussion? All in support?
John raises his hand.
All in support?
Aye.
Aye.
All oppose? This requires a second reading, doesn't it?
It does. And before you continue the public hearing, I know that the applicants have gone to great expense to have their whole team here. So, I'm going to encourage you, if you have any questions, to get those here and now while we're still in this public hearing before you get to second reading, so that the whole team doesn't have to come back in two weeks when you have second reading. It's okay if you want to hear them back and you have questions, but if you don't need to, that would be great to let them know that now.
Do you want any of your team to, have anybody from the team?
No, we're good.
We're good.
I thought the packet was very complete. It's good information. We appreciate that. I think for the reasons of the driveway alone, it's, it's a good move, so I'm in favor of it.
I thought it was great, because I kind of walk that area all the time with my dogs. So, kind of know it. I'm glad that it was moved, the building envelope was moved, because I was thinking about that serpentine driveway, and on a snowy day, and coming out. Yes, it's the same entrance onto Ridge, but that corner is a blind corner, and so many accidents right there.
Okay, so it looks as though we might have 100 percent unanimous support here. So, all in support, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. And we'll do the, we'll continue the public hearing at our next meeting, and...
That's July 17th at 4:00 P.M.
Thank you. I was, I had problems adding 3 and 14. Okay, we will continue the, the public hearing until the 17th. Look forward to seeing this and moving the project forward.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Well done.
I left this on the screen too, in case you need a copy.
Well, I appreciate, Tom, I really appreciate the thoroughness, and Scott, the thoroughness of the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Does anybody need a break, or can we just keep going?
Let's keep going.
Keep rolling.
Okay.
Just started.
I know. It's 4:30, how about that? Next item is consideration to authorize a letter to support and create, not create, create a partnership with ACES for the use of Building 6. The letter is in your packet. We have received some community input. So, I will open the session with Clint. Clint, you want to do anything?
Sure. Just as a little bit of background, in December, on December 21st in 2015, as part of the base village PUD approval, the town accepted the dedication, or the future dedication of Building 6. There was not a use designated or required as part of that dedication. Over the last period of time, the council has had several discussions about what should go in that building and who should be partnered with to operate the building and bring, bring the building to life. And through discussions with a variety of nonprofits, we, we have continued to work with the Aspen Center for Environmental Studies, you know, AKA ACES. Last month, the town council met with some representatives from the Board of ACES to discuss what a proposal might look like, what would go in the building, with the underlying understanding that, you know, ACES has a firm grasp of what the town's looking for, which is vitality, which is programming, which is bringing people to a facility that would be more than, as oftentimes called one and done, but is going to be an ongoing place where locals and guests want to visit. And through that discussion, I think there was a level of comfort developed between the town council and ACES about what would be needed to make a project successful. ACES laid out a number of things that they'll be working forward with, you know, between corporate sponsorships, private sponsorships, and a number of projects they're working towards. And in addition to those, they asked for town support. They said in order to make it effective, they needed us to show a strong level of town support. And so the letter before you is hopefully going to provide that support that they think they need to continue forward with the project. They are, they are through their strategic, or they're, they're in their strategic planning process. They're between boards right now. Their new board, I believe, sits in August. And so the idea, the timing of this letter is to show the letter, to show support to ACES. So when the new board sits next month, let's all understand that the town is, is ready to participate and wants to partner on the project. As the fiscal impact in the staff report states, this is a significant financial contribution. What, what the letter proposes to offer is a million dollars for, to help with the completion and fundraising for the building. Of the million dollars, $700,000 would, is proposed to come from the, from the dollars that were given as community purpose from the developer. And the remaining $300,000 would come from Holy Cross Enhancement Funds. Um, so it would not affect ongoing operations of the town, because we don't use those dollars for any kinds of operations or, um, those core services the town needs to provide. In addition, um, there's a hundred thousand dollars offered for eleven years. And that would be proposed to come from the marketing, from the marketing fund in years four through eleven. Um, as I said, it is a significant contribution. There's no doubt of that whatsoever. But hopefully it'll show, um, the town's support to get this project off the ground. And it's assumed and not, it's, the, the idea behind the, uh, the contribution is that ACES then would be able to leverage those dollars considerably and improve the investment in that building and make their, bring their magic to the project and really treat, create that true partnership, um, for that building. So, a letter has been drafted. Uh, the council has seen the letter. Um, it, it's purposely, you know, written, um, informally. It's a, you know, it's a con, it's a, it's a commitment for sure, but there's no legalese in it. There's a, there's a number of legal issues that we'd still need to go through. We, we've talked about performance measures and how do we make sure the town's getting the dollars worth. We would see that coming forward with future agreements. And that made me just think, one, one issue that I needed to touch base on, as John brought to my attention, um, we're proposing to pay this contribution over, over a number of years. And as such, we, we, we've made ACES aware and they're well aware that through, because of Tabor, the taxpayer bill of rights, we can't have a multi-year obligation without specific legal language in a contract. And so, we'd have to provide that language again. I mean, it's a commitment, it's a obligation morally, but legally, we can't do it.
So, it's kind of a pledge, but not a pledge?
It's a pledge for sure, but not a legal obligation, is how I'd describe it.
Okay.
And, and we do that all the time with lots of our contracts, so it's not, it's not unusual at all.
Um, just a question, and, and, uh, I think a fellow council person may have heard some of the same question, issues. I've heard a little bit over the weekend as well, those people, and it was in one of the, two of the letters that we received. I think Pat, yeah, Pat and, Ryan? Good to see you, good to meet you. Um, I not, don't know we've had adequate public input. I don't think we've had any about what our vision is for ACES. Am I, did I miss something?
I don't think so.
Should we?
For the use of the building?
Yeah. You know, it's, it's one thing to commit a million and then, then what have you. Um, and even though it's not, it's kind of in the form of a pledge, but perhaps the community should have, kinda see what ACES is thinking.
Well, when we met with ACES, it was kind of a, a private session. So, the, the community, I don't think is aware of what...
That's what I thought.
Well, there's been articles in the paper.
Yeah, and we, we made it, we made it, we, it was publicized that we were working with ACES on the building, for sure. Um, and then this would be the, I mean, that was publicized before. Then the executive session was, they, they kinda laid out some of the framework of the ideas. And then from that, with, this is where this letter is proposed to say, we, you know, this is what, hopefully, the town feels comfortable in offering as a partnership.
I think that this is a lot of money. Um, a lot of money for the town to be committing to, to. And I think that, I, I, I mean, I realize there's, there's sort of a chicken and an egg kind of a situation here. ACES has, has said to us that they, you know, prefer to work outside the, um, outside of publicity, get their work done, you know, and, and put something together. There comes a point when we have to bring the town, the rest of the community, into this, so that they, the rest of the community, can get comfortable with what we think is appropriate for the town. And I, even though that this letter is, so to speak, not a legal ob- obligation, I think we're at that point where, um, we need, we need to be more open publicly about what we anticipate this, um, to look like and what we anticipate conceptually, um, ACES is about to do or wants to do. And how that, how their concept will provide a level of vitality and, um, and sustainability that satisfies our, our community out there. I, so, I, I don't know if that means we need it to be, to have a present, we need to have a presentation, um, from ACES and then, you know, in the very near future. Maybe that needs to be included in the letter. But I'm uncomfortable even making a pledge like this, um, without a little bit more community, without some community input. 'Cause right now, people ask us questions, and I think we're the only ones who would be capable of answering them. And I'm not even sure that, I mean, speaking for myself, I'm not sure how well I could answer them at this point.
If the board meeting's in August, is there a potential that we could try to schedule Chris, I know he's back from vacation, to come to our next council meeting and tell us what some of the thinking might be? I mean, it's beyond the bones. Well, what does it mean beyond the bones? It says beyond the bones, that's his project. And I know we've talked about other things within the executive session. But I think, and I'm very supportive, I'm very supportive of this, and I think the community is. The question is, well, what are, what are y'all thinking about? So, an article in the newspaper is one thing. But I think it's wise that we always invite the community to see what the thinking process is behind. Uh, when we build and accept a community purpose, exactly what that community purpose will be, so the community embraces it as a community purpose. That's my thinking.
Well, I think this letter gives us the opportunity to start the communication with the community, so that we can present this plan to say, this is, this is what we're thinking, what do you guys think? Um, I mean, we're not entering into a contract, we're, we're committing to this project. So, um, I think that this is the first step, and we need to send that positive message to the ACES board, so that they come their August meeting, you know, their, their new board is excited about it, and they realize the town's behind them. And if we solicit them to come in and offer more details, I think that just, uh, you know, helps, helps the case. So, I just think this is a, is an appropriate first step.
Well, I'm thinking we, when he is, if somebody from ACES does a presentation, we as a town at that time, in front of the community, can say, and to further it, you know, looking around the community and its community input in a public session, you've got, you've at least allowed the public to weigh in on what we're doing with a million of their dol, it's not our dollars. Whether it's a marketing budget or whether it's, uh, Holy Cross, those are community dollars. I just think it's wiser to do that last pass. And I'm sure the community will support it, but I can't presume as an elected official.
I guess my only question is, um, in their August meeting, I mean, is this letter gonna make or break their ability to want to move forward? I mean, if we don't send some kind of letter affirming...
When is the August meeting?
I, I don't know.
I don't know.
No, I'm just saying, like...
The third week in August.
I mean, my sense was, is that the whole point was that they could go to their board and be like, this is what, you know, Snowmass is willing to do. And if we don't give them something, I don't know how they're gonna...
There's enough time. You're right, at the first week of July, if it's not till the third week. By the third, by the seventeenth, that's well before you prepare a packet to go to a board.
So, you're saying do this presentation before?
Like, that's what I'm suggesting, that we get some community input and get community buy-in to this project.
Well, and, and the present, I mean, the framework, as you recall, um, that they've put together basically, is they'll be looking for, they're trying to land an institutional partner, which is kind of the, the science part of the whole part. They're trying to land a, a corporate partner to help with the funding and the cool factor, you know, the, all the kind of neat ideas they've got. And then, um, then they need to develop their leadership team. They know that they've gotta have a leadership team created on their part to bring the package together. And that's the framework that they're working with. And what they came to the council and said was, in order to kinda get this ball rolling on this three-pronged approach, we, this is, this is what we, I'm speaking on behalf of ACES, that ACES asked for, we think we need a million dollars essentially, or three fifty over three years, to make it work. And that was the initial ask. And so, you're kinda responding, in my mind, with this letter to the initial ask. If, if it's, if it's, if the answer is we need more information, that's great, I mean, I understand that. If the answer is, yep, we think we're within the ballpark, that's certainly an answer or not. But I think they've made that initial ask to saying, if, if the council and the town are comfortable, here's the framework they plan on going forward with those three prongs, but they wanna make sure the town's on board, um, with that approach. And again, it's, it's completely up to you all, uh, the level of comfort. And the idea behind getting this letter out was to say, yes, the town's got a level of comfort with the partnership, and there's gonna be plenty of development going forward, partner development.
I think there's not a person sitting here that's not comfortable. It's the notion that the town is more than just five people. Is there any way we can get a presentation and...
Well, we have, we have another July meeting and we have two meetings in August. Or at least appro, you know, at least one meeting in August.
A community discussion and you do a presentation, and everybody gets far more excited and we act on the letter at that time?
I mean, you, you look, in, in honesty, they made a, you know, a presentation to the five of us.
Yes.
Um, it was a very good presentation. We were all energized. I think we can speak, I can speak for everybody. We were all energized after listening to that presentation. I think something similar to that, um, to the public and to the full community would, could be, would be equally as energizing. And I think we would, we would get support, we, the five of us, we would get support and we'd be able to move ahead. I just, I personally am uncomfortable, um, making even a pledge type of a commitment, uh, for, you know, the way we've written the letter, um, it goes beyond the three-pronged approach, because it covers the next year four, you know, years four to eleven, um, which is operational. So, again, um, what, what is, what, what is ACES' commitment to the operational side that is gonna create this, you know, that vitality that we, that we're hoping for and that, that we want? Again, that, you know, it falls in, just falls into me that, that I would, I would much prefer, um, having some presentation so that the community at large has a much, has a better idea of what kind of relationship this is gonna be and what each party, what's the, what, what the town and themselves and the community is, is committing to and what, and what ACES is committing to. And then we can, we can look at that and, and, and we can move on from there. Uh, you know, the, the idea of not doing it right away, my understanding from ACES when they made their presentation was because of their reorganization of the, the board that they're gonna do this summer. I, 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 I agree Bob, with Bob in regards to that they need to come back, because they got us excited in our work session or executive session. And, um, I think they could do the same for the community, because it, it is an exciting thing that they presented. And if they're still on board with that, I, I, I think they, they have nothing else but good things to gain by making a, a community presentation.
Well, we'll go ahead and take public comments, or I'll open it to the public. No, no, I think we're, I think we've got three to, starting to talk about it, maybe the seventeenth. Well, you look like Mr. Summer here.
Summer, it's Fourth of July, almost.
Welcome back, by the way.
Thank you, thank you. I'm in agreement with what you and Bob and Thomas said. Mel Blumenthal. I have no conflicts at all today. I, because I've written a lot about this in the past, I can just give you a little bit of input on people I hear from. Most of them now are very excited by ACES. They weren't, and I wasn't personally, when it was just Snowmass Discovery. So, I think there is a leg up. People have credibility, a number of members of the community support ACES, and that's a real credible organization. Most of us in the public really don't know what their plan is. I mean, we know there's gonna be some com- combination of climate change kind of programming and the, uh, and the Ice Age discovery, which sounds great. The people I hear from still, and I personally question and wanna know more about how that's gonna create vitality for that particular spot in the village, which I think everybody has said is, is an important aspect. So, we wanna hear, I think the public wants to hear that. The public has no idea, uh, except a few of us, that we're, the, the amount of money we're talking about from the public. And that hasn't even, I don't think, has been a part of what's been out there in the public. So, I think it's important that, one, they hear the program, hear what ACES has to say, and then hear the kind of commitment the town is being asked to make. I'm not sure where everybody's gonna come out on that. If they're convinced on the vitality issue, I think maybe there's a, a strong shot, that the money will, people will get comfortable with the money. But you're talking about, I think I've got it right, 'cause it was a little confusing in some of the writing. I think it's a million seven fifty. You could've read it as two million, but I think it's a million seven fifty. It's a lot of money, that's community purpose money. And I'm not aware that the town has ever put that kind of support into basically a nonprofit. So, this is sort of precedent-setting, and I think it's important to engage them and see if that's where, as a priority, they wanna, they wanna put their money and whether they believe the process, uh, and the, the programming is something that's gonna have long-term effect. That's the other issue, is, you know, this has to work for a long time. And I think people have questions about that.
You know, to an extent, while you're up here, we know there's, we've been in this no-build mode for so long that's destroyed, um, community spirit about when is it ever gonna happen? And the morale of the community during this no-build, and where's the light at the end of the tunnel? There is beginning vitality, as we saw the crane come in, we've seen the elevator shafts go up, we've got an open house or some similar thing to ribbon cutting. I think it's on the eleventh. The sculpture discussion was challenging at best. That has come along, a lot of support for that piece of art. And as we all know, there were a lot of people driving around it, taking a look at it. So, I'm thinking, there is part of this is money, but the other part is how do you create excitement? The presentation ACES did with us five, it was like, well, get it done. And what's gonna happen when the building is not fully open and ready to go? And all the pop-ups and those ideas. That, to me, begins to re-energize the community into rebuilding the community and the vitality we need here as a community. Whether there's a building up or what have you, just the vibe amongst community citizens, I think, would help with a lot of goodwill.
Yeah, I, I agree. But we have to hear it. I mean, we, the community, have to hear it.
We have it.
We haven't heard it, you've heard it.
Yeah.
We have to hear it.
So, there's three of us are suggesting we get a presentation and do the letter at the same time? Can we make that happen on the seventeenth? That's three?
It's your guys' call. The next time you're together is October, August twenty first.
We're gonna have to go without the full council to meet the schedule for their board. I would say next meeting. Who's not here?
I'm not here.
Alyssa's not here.
I'm out for the next two.
We can't wait till the twenty-first of August.
But no, you, I think you should do it. I mean, I, I'm...
I think we gotta do it.
I know what they said, and I'll watch it on the TV, so, if I have internet, so. Watch it from my campground and God knows where.
Oh, yeah, dot. And what part... And what part of the country?
Um, east.
East, going east, okay.
Should be in Maine by then.
Bill, you're here, aren't you?
I am.
Okay.
Well, let me, if that's me, just see when they can show up. I mean, I don't want to commit to something, I don't know their schedule.
So, is there any reason why ACES would not want to do a presentation like this, Clint? I mean, you know, I mean, are they, I, you know, I know they wanted to keep somewhat quiet about this in the beginning, but it seemed, with the article in the paper, it's no longer a secret, and is there...
They're in between boards is the big, biggest issue, and they're, they're trying to, the idea was, let's, let's get the ball rolling a little bit, show support for the incoming board, and so I would imagine we're going to get some feedback saying, let's let the new board sit, and the new board sits the 18th or 21st of August, and they're going to say after the new board sits, we'll be, you know, we can come talk to you about it, but they're not going to want to act in between boards. It would be, if there's pushback on the timing, that would be my guess. And the idea behind the letter was to say, hey, when you're, when you're, when you're going through these transitions, here's some thoughts, the town's in. And if the town council's not comfortable, I'm not pushing the letter in the least. I just was under the understanding that...
I think a conversation with Chris to tell you there's enthusiasm among, amongst the council members to move forward is not a problem, and, in order to build community enthusiasm and...
Community support.
And the community support, and really building that momentum to not only this pretty significant donation, but community donations coming to ACES. I, I think he would be welcome to it. And yeah, we have to, may have to wait till the new board sits, but why don't we let him make that call of when to present?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, moving forward. Don't worry, it'll happen.
I, I have a suggestion.
What?
I'm very concerned that the Tabor language is not in the letter. All right?
Okay.
And if the Tabor language is there, and they understand that this is what you want to do going forward, but it is subject to your appropriation process, which is public to your constituency, I think it's critical that they know that you're ready, but it's still a contingent. I, I talked to Clint about this, I think that the language is, is a bit too strong. He assures me that they're aware of it, he assures you that in the staff report. I'm not sure that their new board will understand that concept and be aware of it from our staff report that we do here. And I think if you included that language in this letter, you could send it out today, and you can make it very clear that you want more information, that that appropriation process doesn't happen until later. But...
I guess, I guess I would like, I guess I would like to see what, what Chris Lane comes back with when Clint says, we'd like to have you here sooner than later. And, and, and then perhaps, John, that's perhaps a, you know, a, a plan B.
Okay, I just, I have to state this on the record.
Oh, yeah, the Tabor, I, yeah.
I'm very, very concerned about language that says, "To this end, the town is committed to this partnership and is willing to make specific assurances to honor this endeavor." When I don't believe legally, you can comply with the terms in the letter, so...
We need to do some homework around the letter and for their understanding of Tabor. So it's not ready to go.
Exactly.
It's not ready to go.
And if that's a public meeting where it's dis- discussed and it's recorded, maybe then it doesn't have to be in there. But to give this to a board that is newly seated, may or may not be familiar with the taxpayer bill of rights in Colorado...
Good point.
Gives me heartburn.
Okay, let's talk to Chris and get a presentation.
Can't, can't have John have an agita, you know what I mean?
It's, you know...
No, John has, if John has one, it's only one step away from us having one.
Okay, that's what we will ask Clint to do, and let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the update to draft of the 2017 community survey. Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize, come on up. I apologize profusely. And you know where the mic is now, and...
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Nolan. I'm a base village owner, part-time resident of Snowmass Village. In fact, I, I make it out here quite a bit. I'm here at least once a month, and several weeks during the winter and several weeks during the summer.
Well, why don't you just move here permanently?
You know, I wish I could at this point in time. Give me a few more years, and that is exactly my plan. And I love it here. I, I married into, into Snowmass, if you will. My wife came here as a kid back in the very early seventies and kept going, and we had a family reunion here, brought me to Snowmass, been coming ever since. I mean, I absolutely love this place. Take advantage of everything that Snowmass has to offer. You could ask me what the favorite season is, and I'd tell you it is the season we're in. I mean, I love the winter, I love the summer, I do everything we have out here. So with that background, I'm also a base village master association board member. And it's in that background that I, I want to talk a little bit about, because I think I know probably more than maybe some members of the public. But from a public perspective, I read the paper here every day. I know more about Snowmass locally and what goes on here than I do where I spend the rest of my time living, which is kind of interesting, tells you how much I like this place. So I've read the articles about ACES and the Discovery Center. I've read council minutes about this when they've come up. I've, I've listened in on meetings about it. I, I'm probably about as knowledgeable as anybody in the public here. And the perspective that I would offer to you is, I don't think I have even remotely enough informa, I, I mean, I don't envy you. If I tried to put myself in your shoes, I don't think I even remotely have enough information to decide something that, in my view, is so critical as the use of, of Building Six, what we put there. I mean, what a tremendous opportunity. I mean, how many times do you get an opportunity to put a building of that size, that prominence, to decide what's going to go there and impact the center, the core of our community for years to come? I mean, that's, that's awesome. And I, I guess what I, it, it may seem funny to say this, since the PUD approval was back in 2015, and we might feel like it's taken forever, but if I could say anything, I think we need to slow down a little bit. I've heard a lot of talk about ACES, but from my perspective, have we really evaluated, have we really got the community input? Have we really evaluated what should go in that building? What is the best fit for that building? And I would, I would offer to you, I don't have that enough information. Perhaps in executive session or these private sessions, perhaps you have a lot more information, and you have come to that conclusion. But I, I also want to make sure I say, I fully support ACES. I think ACES having a facility in Snowmass Village is, would be a great thing. I think it would be a, a major asset to the community. I'm not so sure that's the right location for it. I would propose to you that I think an ACES facility in Snowmass would survive in, in many different locations, not just that facility. So even if it didn't work out for Building Six, I would encourage us to continue those discussions and find a way to have that, to, to be a part of the community. Same thing with the Discovery Center. I'm just not sure we have enough information to know that that really contributes to vitality and vibrancy in Base Village. You know, my vill, part of the reason I bought into Base Village, I love the community, I love the action, I love everything that's going on. East West Partners held a, I was here on the closing day of the ski season, they had the little beach party down there. It's incredible to see that many people in Base Village enjoying it. Something that hasn't happened very often over these, as the dark years, if you will, of no construction. I look forward to that changing, and we have an opportunity to put something at the core of our community that can really bring people together, residents, excuse me, residents and guests alike, repeat visitors. I mean, I, I have, I have tons of ideas myself. I imagine the, the community at large has many more about how we could build a facility that will bring people together, that will definitely provide the vibrancy. So, i- in short, what I'm asking a little bit is to slow down a little bit and do some more due diligence. Not just focus so much on ACES, but have we really looked at all the different purposes of Building Six? Have we really done some, some studies to find out what different options would contribute? You know, how would they bring benefit to the community? How would they bring attendance to, to Base Village, and therefore to the whole community? Everyone could benefit from that. And I think we would all love to see, you know, the Limelight's going to be great there, Building Six, the Plaza. I mean, there's a unique opportunity. It would be a shame to have a building that was a drag on that, or, or didn't contribute to that. So, again, I, I just think this is a rare opportunity, it's unique. There's not a town in America who wouldn't just give anything to have the opportunity that you have. I think it's very important, and I think we need to slow down and make sure we really do all that due diligence, and also, as mentioned, the transparency of getting the community input, I think is critical, because I certainly, other than today, speaking to you, I don't feel like I've had an opportunity to give my ideas. Now, certainly I could have sent them in, but I don't think the town knows enough about it. I think the focus has been so much on ACES with Building Six, that I, I don't feel like we've looked broader than that. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So let's see where we come this next, hopefully, in two weeks. Pat, did you want to speak?
Bear with me, I'm only at eighty-eight percent oxygen saturation. First, let me applaud the comments from Council Mel and Andrew. I agree with, with all of them. For the record, I'm Pat Kiefer, Ninety Carriage Way, a reluctant but by necessity, base village activist and liaison for the base village HOA and residential owners. This means that while you see me, I'm also speaking for the Hayden Board, the Capital Peak Board, the Viceroy Residential Board Member, and that represents one hundred percent of the base village residential owners. By the way, when you see the time-lapse construction plans, photos that are going to be broadcast, they are coming from our balcony. So we're really excited about what's going up and, and on at, at Phase Two. But for the subject that we're on today, to the best of our knowledge, Base Village is the only neighborhood where a municipal building has been planted without the approval of the existing property owners. It has been stated that the town wants to add vitality to Base Village. Well, there are two types, at least two types of, of vitality, vitality, financial and physical. Let's talk financial first. The agenda materials for the meeting commented that there is no direct cost to the town, and that's true as far as it goes, but it should acknowledge that in the December 2015 PUD amendment, the town, in exchange for Building Six, gave the developer twenty more condominiums, maybe worth twenty million dollars, gave itself and Ski Cove free Plaza Two access, one hundred and twenty-five-foot-tall buildings without regard for the Phase One owner's view plane impact, and forever erased the promised-in-writing Base Village and infamous Aqua Center without guaranteeing any scheduled delivery of any pool for Phase One owners. At one point, the, the mayor joked the Building Six site should be set aside for a pool. And at times, we think that might be more appropriate than that initially sounds. But today, we are where we are. And what we're looking for now is three different things. One, we're looking for the town to find a way to deliver access to a substantial pool facility for Phase One owners in compensation for eliminating the Aqua Center from the future of Base Village on or before November twenty-eighth, or twenty eighteen. And second, town council has and been and is adamant since its inception that Base Village be self-supporting. We're asking for reciprocity. There may be no direct cost for the town, but Building Six generates direct costs for Base Village property owners. Building Six is shown to have over a hundred and two thousand for fourteen years of CAMs, or about fifteen percent of the seven hundred thousand funded by the developer. The town signed agreements that allows the developer to pass these costs directly to future Base Village owners. We ask that the town be self-funding and pay the CAMs. In addition, any commercial operations in Building Six should pay all Base One Village Metro tax districts for, number, tax district number one, which is forty-three point five mils, and the GID six-mil tax. From a physical vitality view, we're, we're concerned, and I don't know if it's still the case, and maybe Clint can tell us, that Building Six won't be operational until a year after it's built?
It depends.
It's been said in previous meetings, and, and that concerns us.
We're talking about pop-ups if ACES is the heir apparent. That's what we've been talking about, pop-up.
Okay, that's new news, and, and, and that's, that's excellent news, because the thing that really worries us is, we'd have a plaza with Capital Peak done on one side, 4AB on, on the south, and, and Limelight on the east, and if Building Six is dark, that would be the opposite of what you're trying to accomplish. It would be an extreme drag. And Andrew, I think, expressed his comments on traffic volumes very appropriately. The third thing that we would ask is that we have a functioning, vibrant Building Six to coincide with the completion of everything else in November of, of eighteen. Just like everyone else in Snowmass, we rely on town council and town staff to ask, act in our best interests. Given that in March I shared the computation that Base Village has contributed sixty million dollars in real estate transfer taxes, property taxes to the community over the past nine years, we think these are three reasonable requests. We thank you for the consideration of providing substitute Aqua Center pool access in Phase Two, and having Building Six bring both financial and physical vitality to Base Village by November of eighteen. I remain a reluctant base village access activist on behalf of residential owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Good job, time.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Let's move on. Any other comments? Travis?
Yes. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm here for round two of the community survey, or to pick up where we left off on June nineteenth, where we saw the first version of the 2017 community survey. Since that time, we've incorporated a lot of the feedback and edits that town council had. Thank you again for all of that feedback.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Very helpful.
I love to do that. It's the most exciting part of the year.
We've also met with each of the department directors to incorporate a lot of their feedback, changes, and requests for new questions. So, the survey that was included in your packet probably looks a lot different than the one we saw on June nineteenth, but the goal tonight is to get it ready to execute as soon as possible. ETC Institute, our consultants for this project, are in the process of building the electronic version of the survey, assuming there's no major changes to the questions asked. We will have that ready for testing on Wednesday, so I'm not working tomorrow. But Wednesday, we hope to have it finalized, ready to go, and it will be posted and available as, by the end of this week. It'll immediately be available on our website at tusv.com/survey. Just doing a little plug for the audience real quick. New this year will also have a separate domain for a direct link to the survey, so that's going to be snowmasscommunitiesurvey.com. So that will be by the end of this week. We also have postcards going out as soon as the end of this week as well, and we plan on sending out an email to all of our subscribers on July twelfth. Survey will be open through this month, July. Depending on our response rate, we could absolutely extend that if necessary. And then ETC Institute is planning on being here in person to present the results to you guys on Tuesday, September fifth. That's the plan moving forward.
Okay, so you've worked really, really hard, Travis. This is taking...
It's a lot of folks, but yes, thank you.
A lot of, a lot of hours, a lot of heavy lifting. So, I'm going to ask council versus going page by page by page. How about we just identify if there's any item that needs some additional work?
Okay.
Bob? I guess your first did.
Travis, I, I, I really like the way you changed the format around. I think that you've kind of asked a lot of questions, but it doesn't look like a lot of questions, if you, if you follow me?
Yeah.
And I, I think that it's going to make it easier for the community to work their way through this and not feel like it's kind of never-ending. My first, my first comment is, relates to item number four, question number four, and it's really a question, is this a, is this one of those questions that's, oh, you only get to answer if your answer on number one is a, is two or three?
Yes. And we tried to indicate that some places, so...
Yes, you did indicate some places and not others, and that was kind of one of the reasons why I wrote it down just to be...
Right. Yeah, we did not specify that, but yes. Right. Yeah, we did not specify that, but yes, that will be built into the electronic version.
And number five, can you answer multiple answers here? And if you can, then you'd have to go to both five A and six. I mean, it's because it's conceivable that somebody would be interested in either rental or ownership.
I will make sure that yes, you can answer both of those.
Okay.
In which case, yeah, you would see all of the questions if you did.
You want me to keep going, or?
Yeah, just keep going.
The skip logic is definitely like the number-one priority when we go into testing the electronic survey, so...
So, number eight, again, is one that, because it didn't indicate this, but it would only be asked if your answer to number four was deed restricted, right?
Yeah, and that's actually specific to rental housing. So, it's only if your residence is a current TSV rental.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And, let's see. Oh, on fifteen, I think you've got a typo under the yes answer. Fifteen A and fifteen B, I think, rather than ten.
I think you're right. Thank you.
Yep.
Boy. Somebody took the survey from all perspectives.
Oh, seventeen, and again, I think this is just a typo. But number five doesn't show the, you know, doesn't show your five, four, three, two, one. So, I presume that was just the typo.
Yeah, we added that information. I just didn't fill it all the way up. Thank you.
Okay. So, this is a question that relates to a few of the, a few of these survey questions. The first one I came across was number twenty-one, which is, based on your experience, indicate if you feel the current levels of police presence. So, we've, we've used, you know, very satisfied down to very dissatisfied, all the way through. And here, two-thirds of the way through, we interject this new idea of, you know, too high, too low, just right. What, was there a, is there, you know, a conscious reason for, for making that switch?
Well, because if you say for traffic patrol, are you satisfied with traffic patrol? A speeder might not be satisfied because they're getting hit with trap, too much patrol. Some other people might think there's not enough patrol. So, all of these regulatory qualifications that we're trying to measure here are, are we doing too much regulation or too little regulation kind of thing? And so, when you say satisfied, somebody might say, presence of special events. Well, is it, do we have too many or too less, or about right? We're trying to measure differently versus satisfaction, because satisfaction or dissatisfaction might be too much or too little, and we don't know.
Oh, I see.
It's a quantity measurement.
In other words, someone might think that in their neighborhood, as an example, there isn't, there, there isn't much traffic patrol, but that's perfectly fine, so they're satisfied, right?
I'm satisfied. And it's, or it's just right.
So, in which case, they would put in just right.
They would say it's just right. I would, I would also add, I mean, if there isn't really a difference between how you ask, or maybe there is, but it's just how it's been asked in the previous surveys, so we would want to keep it consistent.
Okay. There's a typo on twenty-three, Travis, that item number one there, the Village Shuttle, should be twenty-three B.
And that same question, I flagged it for that reason, and also because it says, "Have you or would you utilize any of the following programs if they were offered?" Well, we offer the Village Shuttle, so that's just, doesn't, it's weird to me. That's like insinuating that we don't offer a Village Shuttle.
You don't.
We don't offer it everywhere.
You don't, that we do not.
But we offer it in the town. So, I feel like if you want to, if it's talking about the actual routes, then I feel like you need to, like, say that. You know, if there were different village, or better access to Village Shuttle routes. But I think when you just put Village Shuttle, I don't, I didn't really, I was like, well, there is Village Shuttle.
Okay.
I mean, is that what you're trying to get at? Like, would you utilize it more if the, if it came on a route that you preferred?
No. I mean, the idea there was to gauge interest, and specifically, we talked about WeCycle. So, we wanted to see who was interested in that.
Right, and there's all these other programs which we don't currently have. The only one that we currently have is Village Shuttle.
Well, no, we have Taxi Service.
Well, and, sorry, and Taxi Service. That was the other one.
So, yeah.
It's just...
David and I kind of went around on this one, and what we were trying to do was basically combine the question that was already there, was do you ride the Village Shuttle, yes or no? As well as add the question that town council wanted to ask, would you use WeCycle, yes or no? And also expand it to all the other different transportation alternative programs that are out there. We can definitely work on...
Well, basically, those other programs are like an expansion of programs. So, maybe it's more of, you know, some of the programs we already have in addition to these other programs that we could be potentially, you know, of interest to people. I don't know, I just, maybe just rewording the language. It just sounds weird to me, because we do have some of those, and we don't have others. And the language doesn't indicate that.
Yeah, I think we'll maybe pull out the Village Shuttle and go back to the way it was.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Because we have to ask the Village Shuttle to get to twenty-three B, basically.
Yeah, and I, and I think it should be in there, and I think you could keep it as long as you just change the language a little bit.
I appreciate that. Because you're really trying to find out if there's, if we need new routes, right?
Or additional routes.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the last two, thirty-six and thirty-eight, both would or should be connected to question number one, you know, relative to you're a full-time or part-time resident.
Right.
Okay.
But all in all, I think it's a great...
Oh, I had one more.
You've done a good job.
Okay. Are you?
I'm done.
You're done? Okay, Alyssa.
On thirty-three?
Yes.
Says, thirty-three B, it says, "If no, please tell us why you do not feel your voice is heard and, and/or how we could improve." I would, I would maybe say, like, solutions for improvement. I don't know, it just sounded weird to me. It sounds like we're doing a bad job. You know, like, tell us why you don't feel your voice is being heard, and, you know, let us know if you have any solutions for improvement in any of these areas. I'm just, it just sounds like we're...
Recommendations.
Okay.
Poorly doing these things.
And they will only, the respondent will only see that one if they answer no.
Right, I recognize that. I just wanted to...
Yeah, we can change that, right?
You're after solutions versus problems.
Right.
Okay.
But otherwise, you did a great job.
The completion date, you don't have that on the start. So, if somebody wanted to look and see, by the way, am I going to win these Jazz tickets, or am I going to win any other gift certificate? I think maybe you need to put the completion date, and that way, at least they can look forward to it.
For the drawing? Or for the survey closing?
Well, the survey closing would be the drawing, correct?
Well, we could make, you could, honestly, you could make the date. If, if, if the proposed, proposal is for the survey to be open through July thirty-first, you could actually put drawing on, you know, on August first with all for July thirty-first.
Right, so it's like putting a carrot out there, so people, you know...
In order to be eligible to win, you have to have completed by the thirty-first. Don't put a date, because you may get in that trap, that something goes wrong.
Yeah, leave some of the room or...
That's the right line.
Yeah.
I was trying, couldn't come up with the right line.
You have to be present to win. You have to complete it to win.
So, we'll make it like mid-August or something. That'll give us some time to maybe extend the survey if we want to. And then, the consultants actually recommended not advertising deadline, you know, up until, or maybe three days away, just so people don't feel like they have all the time in the world.
Well, the only reason I say that is because the Jazz Aspen tickets, if somebody's, maybe I'm going to win some, I won't buy them, you know? Right?
I would change that one.
Well, I mean, it's a possibility. Some people think that way, you know? I mean, if you go mid-August, we're talking two more weeks, it's pretty close to the Jazz Aspen concert.
Yeah, but if you...
I mean, you're investing in this community survey, and if your response rate isn't where you want it at the end of July, you want to preserve your flexibility despite the prize that someone's relying on winning because they...
They took a chance.
They might want it to close because you only have two hundred responses on July thirty-first, and you determine that's not the right number.
Yeah, we don't want to get into the trap.
Anyways, that's fine.
Yep. And I would just say, Travis, your time and feedback, as a, as a way to say thank you for your time and feedback, at the end of the survey, you can enter to win. It just...
Is that at the beginning of the survey?
Yeah, it said that first paragraph. I would just take at the end and put it up higher, because it sounds weird when you have it after the list of those things.
Got you.
Great job.
I think you worked...
I'm going to take that survey.
How many times?
How many times?
Are we limited?
I feel like I've already taken it like ten times.
Then you can have your children taking, right?
You capture the IP address?
We don't say must be eighteen or over to take this survey?
One per address. One per IP address?
Yeah.
And is the postcard mailed to tax rolls? Every PO box. So... Every PO box gets one. Yeah.
And can you start it and finish it at a different time? Does it allow you to do that?
I don't think so. I will, I will look into that, though. I know when...
I just think it's nice, because like, you know, sometimes like you're doing it, and then something comes up, and then you forget, and then you go back, and you're like, oh, crap, it's like...
That happened to a few people. Last time, two thousand and fifteen, we could not. Their software might be different and might allow that.
I mean, it would be nice.
Yeah, I agree. I'll ask. So, if you're on the subscriber list, you'll get an email. If you have a postcard here, you'll get it. What about the people that were missing there?
Newspaper advertising.
Yeah, we advertise it through our normal channels, you know. We'll use social media pretty heavily. Those work well, since you can, you know, click on the link directly online. We'll also have online ads through the snowmasssun.com. We'll have newspaper ads in the paper with the URL.
How many addresses are on your newspaper, on your newsletter list?
Four thousand five hundred and eighty-seven emails. That was earlier today. We got an ad, you know, going now to tell people to subscribe, so they don't miss the link to the survey. You know, it'll be on grassroots. We'll have it on Aspen Public Radio. We'll have it on K-Snow with a link to the survey.
Good.
So, yeah. And I would just say, push it out to all the boards and associations, make sure... HOA, yeah, we'll ask them, Boarding Commissions, yeah, sure. We'll use that email list, and then, yeah, the HOA is going to share it with their contacts as well.
Great.
Which will be helpful.
Good suggestion.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're pretty well, I think it's good to go with those few little minor, minor tweaks. So, have a good day off tomorrow.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Town Council reports and actions. Clint, do you have anything? What's the game plan now for not doing fireworks for tomorrow?
I'd have to go to our website at goesnowmass.com to tell you the exacts, but I believe it's desserts at, from six and... Or I'd ask these guys, seven-thirty to nine-thirty, desserts on the lawn, lawn games, in the Base Village lawn.
Go on the dark lawn games.
So, activities in the Base Village lawn area with desserts being, desserts and games being the emphasis now.
DJ.
DJ, we got a DJ going, huh?
I'll do the DJ. I think it advertises the DJ. Sounds like fun.
Sounds like a rock and roll party.
I've already been through this today.
Can adults participate in the games?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll take you on at some cornhole.
I heard it was like the amusement parks. You know, they have the little guy with the arm out, and you have to be so tall.
Oh, boy. It's going to come back at you, don't worry. Okay, Tom, do you have any...
Madam Mayor, before, there was one item that I want...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I gave you, you all received, I gave it to you on Friday. We received late Thursday a letter from, and a blanker came from, basically from CAST, asking the town to see if we wanted to sign on as a organization or as individuals onto a letter to the governor. I know you received it on Friday, because we received it Friday morning, I believe, or Thursday late night, from the Rocky Mountain Climate Organization, and I mean, it's up to you. I didn't want to pass the opportunity for something you wanted to sign on to. It's not a rush on our part in the least, but we wanted to make sure you were aware of the opportunity to consider it. The idea, we thought, is if the council wanted to act on it as a whole, that's why it's on today's agenda. You could act on it as a whole as a body, but individuals wanted to, they certainly could do that as well. But we wanted to get that before you, just in case it was something you did want to take action on.
I personally was fine with the letter as written, and I think it should be a council, not an individual.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree.
I think it'd be good if they hear from all of us, yeah. Right, and so if you just, I mean, just to kind of make it official, if it is a board, if you just make a motion to, we can set it up electronically and get you just signed up that way as a town.
Do I have a motion accordingly?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to send a letter to the governor.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second, eh?
Any further discussion? All in support?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay, reports. Tom?
No, I don't have anything. We have a high-five stuff coming up with CORE in the near future. I was just looking for the dates. I don't have them in front of me, but there's a lot going on with CORE, actually. I just don't have the time to go to every one of the events, not necessarily our staff meetings, but there's, they're planning something down in Garfield County, down in Rifle in August. I think it's August fourteenth. Again, I don't have the dates in front of me, but they want to bring Aspen and everybody down to talk about sustainable energy and what they could do for making the whole valley that way. So, I'll get the dates for our next meeting and have them available.
And how was your welcoming of the cyclists?
Oh, I'll tell you what, that was so much fun. These guys and women that Mayor had to leave early, and I had the honor of presenting the jerseys and stuff like they do on Tour de France. And the young lady that won King of the Mountain beat all the guys. And she got to the top in the independence past in front of everybody, and she probably didn't weigh more than ninety, eighty-five pounds, tiny little thing, and what a little sweetheart she was, but the, these riders...
Sure, women can do something.
These, this group of riders were not...
Wouldn't she be the queen of the mountain zone, out the camp?
Right, well, they're not, this is not, this is not a group that was really like Ride the Rockies. This was a group of seasoned professional riders. I think sixty-six percent of them are, were professional riders. This particular woman was on the, on the women's circuit for quite a while. And you could tell, I mean, this was day five into their seven-day event, and there was nobody drinking a beer. Everybody was hydrating and doing the right thing, and it was, you could, you could have heard a pin drop in there when, I think his name was Larry, who was presenting things. And they had sensational video of every day, the people that they had putting their videos together. They had their planning meeting every day at six o'clock, and the videos for the day was done daily, and it was as professional. They actually had a one-minute thing on Snowmass that, I don't know where that came from, but we should get our hands on it. And it was, it was a great little marketing thing. Thanks for reminding me, Billy, because it was really, I stuck around for the whole, their plan for the next day and what they were doing, and I really found it very interesting. And way out of my league, as, you know, as the mayor said, well, we have a rider here, and I'm not that kind of rider.
I gave you credit, come on.
Yeah, I know, I, I appreciated it, but the, these, these people were.
They were something else.
They were something else and, uh, I think, you know, th- they came up the pass and they, they really, that probably, Independence Pass was probably one of their big hills for the week.
Yeah, that's right.
No doubt, but I would've liked to have seen them go up the other way. I, I personally think that coming up the Leadville Way is the easier way, but that's fine. They did it and, uh, would've been just a gas to see them all come down too. And they, when they got to the summit, they had a good old time cause there was pictures of everybody celebrating on, on the summit. So, I don't know where, you know, how they did their times. So, they, cause each team stopped and celebrated. They had plenty of refreshments and, uh, anyway, it, it was a, it was an honor to be able to be, be part of it. Thank you.
Well, um, I was at the CML conference a couple of weeks ago and, uh, I thought that I owed the community some, um, response and to what I saw there, heard there and learned there. Um, I went to a lot of sessions on the subject of resiliency. Uh, as we know, resiliency touches many parts of our town, uh, in our town government. Um, and I, 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 I came away really with the idea that although we have a, a goal, you know, one of our stated goals is sustainability and resiliency. I think we, um, we should be, I guess I'd like to see us spending some more time discussing what that really means and maybe even breaking it down into some of its subcategories, um, such as financial resiliency, economic resiliency, um, and, and so forth. Um, we've, we have, I believe, made great strides in the last few years in our disaster resiliency with the wildfire mitigation that continues every summer. Um, I will, um, I'll give a shout out to Heinz Simon again for his support, uh, for the, for the entire Ridge Road Faraway area, for wildlife, wildfire mitigation. Um, we've, in, we've, the view going up Ridge and Faraway has improved significantly now that all the standing dead and the, the downed dead around the, around the roadways have been picked up. Um, uh, I also, um, well, I, I also w- went to a session on revitalizing creative spaces and I guess this is kind of, this kinda sparked me because of the sculpture and the, the discussions we've recently had around, um, this, uh, the, the Arts Advisory Board and what, uh, we would like an Arts Advisory Board to really be doing and how we can, how we can jumpstart, uh, public art in town. And, um, I learned that a, a, a lot of towns are using public pa- private partnerships for establishing community foundations. Um, another thing, I mean, which came up at the dedication to the, uh, of the, of the sculpture is that our community foundation or the one that was used to, um, uh, for the financial support of this sculpture is not really set up properly to allow for donations that aren't specific to a certain s- something specific. I gu- I guess is the best way to put it. So that if someone wanted to donate X amount of money to public art and put it in a bank account dedicated to public art, my understanding is that the present community foundation structure doesn't allow for that. So, again, I wanna perhaps, um, perhaps we as a council should maybe put that on a work session agenda. We might wanna have some discussions with SOB about how to do that or what we, you know, what we would like as a town, what we think as a town would be the best approach for, um, creating a viable, um, entity to handle our, you know, donations for public art. And, um, yeah, so that was another one. And then, um, I went to some things on, um, relationships between councils and staffs and town managers and things along those lines. I think I've sent you all some ideas, uh, that I came away with on that. Um, and I, you know, I, I definitely enjoyed it. I took a tour of the, um, uh, the, the Breckenridge, um, public, uh, workforce housing projects of which they have quite a few under construction.
Right.
Uh, and got some ideas or thoughts there. Um, they seem to be really doing a very nice job. Again, some public-private partnerships, um, with Colorado Mountain College and I think there's another organization that is, is, um, is, is coordinating with that as well. Um, so that is kind of my summary of my take from the CML conference. Uh, of course, you meet people, um, it's invariably you meet people and you just kinda do that and share ideas or share, share stories, um, and that's always fun too. Um, I do have one other, uh, I guess request, uh, at least for discussion. And that is, um, I was wondering if we could have a presentation from our, uh, human resources uh, person who's now been at the job for about six or eight months and giving the community an idea of, um, maybe some of her, you know, what she's come up with in, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, how she feels the town is, is doing, you know, relative to some processes and procedures and things along those lines. You know, in a general way, how's the town's human resources group look?
What is the function? How does it work?
What's the function? How does it work? Yeah, it's kind of like, um, something we, we once tried in, um, the work sessions of, you know, how is this done? Um, but that kind of a thing. So, I don't know how you all feel about that, but I throw it out to.
I don't even know the community knows we have an H R function. That's the other part.
That would be a good reason to do it as well.
What is an H R function? How does it work? Reporting structure up to Clint. Um, I can help you with that.
So, if you guys want, I can.
I think we do.
I mean, one of the, I know in the next, say, I don't know exactly when it'll be done, but we've got every two years, the council, at least traditionally, has asked for an update on, um, uh, salary amendments. And so, we could certainly work that in as part of that and we could talk about.
Sure.
We've done some performance and, uh, evaluation on how our benefits.
Did, how about conflict resolution stuff that we, we heard about in the beginning of this discussion six months ago or so and I never heard a follow-up with it in, in regards to some of the stuff that was going on in public works?
Yeah, I mean, I could, we can certainly speak in generalities, um, in what's going on and approaches we take and philosophies that we utilize. That's, no sweat whatsoever. I wouldn't wanna get into the details of the.
Right, no, no, I don't, I don't either. No, I just wanted, I just wanted to know if the process is being, uh, taken care of.
As much as we can with human beings, yes. I mean, I mean, it's a human interactions and whatnot for sure and it's a process, but, yeah, no, if that's something the council wants to hear about, we could certainly schedule that. You let me know when you wanna hear it. And, uh, I would, I think it'd be worthwhile to coordinate it with this overall presentation that you guys receive every other year thereabouts and, and then you guys can ask questions.
I think it's a great idea.
Good, yeah.
When, so when do you want it?
When it, when.
When the report's done?
When that report's done.
Okay.
Seems like it makes the most sense.
Most sense as we get ready to go into budget season. Uh, I really don't have anything. I do, but I don't. Other than I'm just glad July fourth is tomorrow. I wish we could have fireworks, but it is what it is.
And it is.
And I, you know, unfortunately, we did not have as large of a crowd as what we had hoped for this last weekend and, um, Artbase or Art, whatever it was.
Bluebird Arts.
Bluebird Arts. I think a lot of people thought it might be a craft show. And it clearly was not that. It was amazing to walk into that tent and see, um, that art medium. It was, and the concert, fabulous concert. Sad we didn't have more people up there. It was good.
Was the concert not well attended?
It looked empty.
Really?
Probably no more than two hundred people on the line.
There was four hundred tickets sold, I was told.
Okay, that's, it was just not well attended.
Maybe cause there were so many other things going on?
I think because we charged for tickets.
I think we learned something. It's, uh, it's hard to give some, people something for free and then charge them for it. Um, even though drive-by truckers and serotonin's were awesome.
Mm-hmm.
But it's hard to change people's mindset. I would assume they were looking for more than four hundred tickets. Well, you, yeah, of course, but I mean, I think part of it that I was explaining to me is that a four hundreds sell out of the belly up and that would be a kind of a typical show-up for a band like this. And so, you know, talking with producers, what are they looking for? What's their outcome? Um, you know, I talked to him yesterday afternoon for an hour and I think there was, he had a high level of satisfaction and was looking for ways to change and modify and yeah, we, we took some risk. We knew that. We experimented and that's what we do on purpose. And sometimes we hit a home run and sometimes we, I call it a single, maybe a double, I don't know, whatever you wanna call it. But we're gonna, they're, they're excited and we're gonna touch base with them again and say, how do we make improvements or changes to make it more successful going forward?
You know, it was a first time, first time, first time events.
And if you sat through the art part, I know Madam Mayor, you said that, it was cool.
It was cool.
Pretty neat to go look at that stuff and especially the, anyhow, I mean, anyhow, I think that we've got a good base to work from. We've got some ideas for changes, um, and we'll work with them to see what they wanna do in the future.
Sounds like they were, really were interested in coming back, which is great.
Was the, uh, the art well attended over the weekend?
I haven't heard numbers, honestly. I don't know.
But they were happy.
When I talked to him yesterday afternoon, yes.
Good. Well, they're an interesting group. I thought their stuff was fun.
Oh, it was so much fun. Virtual reality.
Yeah, that was great. That was really good. Um, I'm just looking at my calendar. It looks like I am gonna be out on July seventeenth.
Oh.
So.
That, that's a problem.
Because you have to recuse himself on that.
Oh, for the second reading? What are we doing?
The second reading for the.
The, uh.
Can one of us come in virtually?
Nope.
What?
You can't come in virtually.
U-Roles don't allow that. You're looking at August seventh.
Yeah, August seventh.
Is that gonna push them?
Yeah, we can't do it with two people.
Right, but what's their timeframe for building? I mean.
After they get approval.
Yeah, but they're anxious to get on this, that's.
Yeah.
Is there any way we could move that meeting earlier in the day? Does that help?
We're gonna have to renotice it and get it to when there's.
The seventh, I mean, if that's, the, the meeting dates are set, you set them and if you can't make it, that's, this is.
It has to be at a regular meeting.
So, we'll make it on the seventh.
I was gonna say move it to another, have a special regular meeting.
We'll notify them and say this is how it needs to be and it's, I mean, it's the law. It's not polite. It's, they gotta have so many people. You all have to have a quorum, so it's not a.
So, do we have a meeting, uh, on the tenth, the work session?
Yes.
Like John said, it's gotta be a regular meeting.
Can we notice that as a regular meeting or is it too late?
But.
It can't be a regular meeting.
Isn't this, but the seventh is before that. Wait, which month are you talking about?
July.
July seventeenth.
So, next week's a work session, then the seventeenth, and then we don't meet again until the seventh.
It's all right, it's just.
It's what it is.
It is what it is.
Yes.
Who's out absent August seventh? I'm here. Bob's out.
I'm out August seventh.
I'm here.
But for that matter, he's recused.
And I'm recused.
Tom, you here?
August seventh, I'm here. I'm going to miss the work session on, uh,
October ninth.
Octo- oh, excuse me, I'm thinking October. Yeah, I'm here, August. Right, right now I am, until something happens, if I was in.
Okay. Okay, other things? Bill?
Uh, that's it.
Alyssa?
I'm, I'm fine. Got nothing to say.
Alyssa, have a nice vacation.
Thank you. Very much.
You're going camping.
I make a motion to, uh, adjourn.
All in support?
Second.
Oh, second, yeah, we can do that. All in support, aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good discussion. So, do you go up to Bar Harbor or where do you go?
Um, yeah.